Time is nine oh two. We're going into our combined session. This meeting is being recorded. Please silence and shut off your cell phones and join us in the pledge of allegiance, please. Mr. Schulze, review this.
Our pledge of allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Do we have anyone online?
Just a second, I need to tune my view. There we go.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, we got Jay Collins. Great. Any additions or deletions?
Yes, we have additions. The surface treatment rock for fiscal year two thousand twenty five and twenty twenty six. Odegaard right-of-way acquisition. Business office staffing. Lake County and Clive County Juvenile Department intergovernmental agreement.
Perfect, thank you. All right, first item is Kevin Hawk, surface treatment rock for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Morning.
Good morning.
Party Construction is here in Tidewater Pit, which is South Lakeview. They are making material that they previously had to make for, I think, a railroad contract for ballast material. And some of that is able to be made into spec rock for use on the road. Three-quarter ten, three-eighths to four. The volume that they're making down there allows this to be a very, very competitive, a very good price for us. And we're gonna need this material in order to continue on with our long-term plans for fiscal year twenty five and twenty six. For the roads that we would chip seal in District Two, so New Idaho, Thomas Creek, some of the Bay Area routes. These quantities allow for that work. It would be weighed by the ton. This is actually by the ton, not by the yard. Some contracts are one way or the other. They actually have scales set up there because the way they have to purchase it through their lease is by the ton. So there's fifty-two hundred tons of three-quarter ten, there's fifty-four hundred tons of three-eighths to four, and there's thirty-five hundred tons there of very, very similar material as to what we experienced. Good quality from these project roads that are cottonwood and hogback road, same spec material. But it's material that's gonna be made because of making these other products. So we did it at a very competitive rate. There is one other contractor that can make here locally three-quarter-ten material, and it's sixteen and a half dollars a ton. But that's not on the whole. That's, we, the dollar amount, I should say, the savings for the county is in the volume.
At sixteen and a half, you can only get so much.
Well, and only one kind of material. So if we would delete that and go with somebody else for half a cent, I don't know what the price would be on the other because the dollar amount is based on the volume. In the past, we've utilized the Lake County Contractor View Board Rules Number Eight. Although I didn't list it on the cover sheet, will result in substantial cost savings to Lake County, and the seller is the only source of the product. Spec material.
Okay. All right. I don't really have any questions. It's a good deal for us, and we'll likely have a motion under Rule Eight. It must be very cost-saving.
A lot of much cost savings. I guess I can't express that enough. You know, we've done other contracts, different places in the county, and some of that goes along with the region of where it is in the county and what we have to expect to pay for it. But seventeen-dollar material here is, we need to take advantage of that.
So if I were a ton of gravel, I could get it for seventeen dollars?
I'm not sure. I don't wanna speak for the contractor.
I might be checking into that.
It's a pretty good deal.
All right.
I'll make a motion to accept the surface treatment rock proposal from Party Construction for fiscal impact of two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand seven-hundred dollars utilizing Rule Eight.
All right, I'll second that motion. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Odegaard Road right-of-way acquisition.
So in this case, I think I'll just read this summary. You guys have it in front of you, but for the recording and so forth, I think I'll just read this summary. Whereas the Lake County Board of Commissioners assigned authorization to the road department to acquire rights of way on Odegaard Road in an effort to repair lot lines that were having negative impacts on the west side of Odegaard Road. Anderson Engineering concluded that over three landowners, there would be nine-point-six-one acres needed to be acquired south of the cattle guard. So I think there's, I think there's like forty-two-hundred linear feet of road that this was gonna affect. I read the conclusion of the engineer saying nine-point-six-one because in previous meetings to this, as soon as I find it, I'll tell you. We discussed that through information that was required, or I should say, I acquired from our tax assessor to initiate these findings or dealings, or whatever you wanna call it. Three-point-seven-nine acres is what was previously discussed, divided by three landowners. The actual survey of where the new lines will be include nine-point-six-one acres of, well, it will be deeded county right-of-way. Property lines will be properly documented, and landowners will pay on verification of that survey. The total fiscal impact for this property is fifty-seven thousand six-hundred-and-sixty dollars.
So just not to get into weeds on this at all, but there was, because of that previous, some of the previous discussion that we had in past meetings, the real point why that acreage went up was some of the data that we were getting out of Deschutes County and some of those other records. It was the acreage from on the west side of the road primarily. And it wasn't taking into account where the road is currently. And so we have to snap that actually to the east side of the road, take that acreage into account. Now, we are, I think, we don't, we're not looking at a full thirty foot from the center of the road, correct?
We are.
We are.
So I can, I'll be specific with what you're asking. So previously, the acreage was from the section line, which is where the actual real fence is right now, to thirty-foot west of what our roadway assumed right-of-way would be. That was three-point-seven-nine. We, in this acquisition, are encompassing or taking in all of the road right-of-way that we assumed was correctly documented in the past. That includes a new right-of-way line thirty feet east of what is the actual center line of the existing road. So we're adding sixty-foot width and some variable measurement of private land that is part of this acquisition, forty-two-hundred linear feet long, and that's where the added acreage comes from. Comes from the road that exists now. That's where that all is.
I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record is, because that number's changed quite a bit from the last meeting. And just mostly from that full accounting of that survey.
Yeah, without, I mean, part of this, I guess, authorization to continue to try to negotiate this acquisition was that Daryl had to provide me, Anderson Engineering had to provide me with what the actual lot size was that we're talking about. And so we have that down as accurate as possible at this time.
All right, any other questions, thoughts on this?
Okay, so originally, we had a sliver on the west side of the road.
Yeah, it varied in widths from, I think, forty-seven feet down to like twenty-one foot or something like that. You guys have seen all those maps. At some point, they were up here on the screen.
But we're gonna, we're purchasing that sliver from the current landowners.
And that equaled three-point-seven-nine or whatever I just had.
Three-point-seven-nine. But we're also talking about what is currently part of the road as payment as well.
Because that road sits on this property.
Not by their choice.
Well, that's because as, you know, we went on and investigated this and found that that the road in fact was not where it was described. So that's why.
Copy. So now we're up to six-point-nine-one.
Nine-point-six-one, I think. Yes, nine-point-six-one. Divided by three landowners.
Which?
I wish it was six-point-nine-one. I wish it was three-point-seven-nine.
I'm trying to talk to you, Dan.
You don't have to talk too much. I'm there, I agree.
So Tina, do we have, was there an email from Commissioner Albertson that you received?
Yes, he wanted it to be entered into the record. He says, "I agree to Lake County buying the property of Odegaard Road for six thousand dollars per acre, which will be paid for out of the road department."
Okay, so that comes out to, the fifty-seven thousand six-hundred-and-sixty divided by nine-point-six-one comes out to exactly that number. So I just wanted to make sure that we captured that within this meeting so that we had good consensus from all three commissioners that that is what we'll be taking action on today.
That's what the expenditure will be. If action is taken and we move forward in doing this, then Daryl will supply me with the actual legal descriptions, and I can go to Amerititle and begin this process.
Okay. Sounds good. All right.
Although this time, all of the title checks have been thoroughly gone.
At this point in time. And I appreciate that, sir, thank you. I'll entertain a motion on this, sir.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Odegaard Road right-of-way acquisition in the amount of fifty-seven thousand six-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Totally nine-point-six-one acres, that's six thousand dollars an acre, to the three landowners affected by this acquisition.
All right, I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Did that capture everything? I think that you needed.
I can move forward now, so, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have on the record consensus as well from Commissioner Albertson on this motion.
So Kevin, we tagged you to kinda brooduck this project and negotiate with landowners and whatnot. Really appreciate the time that you put into this. I think it really made a difference, and we got to a good solution. So appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. If I could have just one minute, I'd give you guys a summary on some of our Christmas Valley work that's completed. So we chip sealed Milliken Road, Fossil Lake Road, and what I call the lost forest section of asphalt is actually Fossil Lake Road. We did a multiple application on that and bog sealed it, and it has paint lines on it, so those roads are completed. One thing I do want to, and there's no way for me to bring all my employees in here, but I shouldn't say there's no way. It would be very difficult to do that. But I guess for this record, for this board's, I guess, acknowledgement of this, we're not, because of budgetary constraints, a big buyer in the world of road oil, which means we don't necessarily have a lot of leverage in how much we can plan for a day. Typically, and you guys have seen our contracts, we write up that we're gonna receive four tankers of oil a day. That's a significant amount of oil for a crew of thirteen, fourteen people, including myself, to put down. We did six tankers a day, every day, in Christmas Valley while we were there. So I wanna give the employees of the road department credit for that because we literally started shooting oil at five minutes after five, and we were done some nights at eight-thirty. And they need the recognition for that because it's long days, and it's not fifty-five degrees and hooded sweatshirt weather while we're out there doing that kind of work either. So I wanted to make sure everybody kinda was aware of that. The other reason why, we all understand as road department employees that we have to work that many hours to get this product done, is the efficiencies that we experience because once you're on the road with that much equipment, savings is quite substantial to our lane mile costs. And we do our best to minimize the inconvenience to the public as much as possible. So I wanna just take a minute to recognize those employees for putting in that time.
I really appreciate that, Kevin. And thank you because you don't really have the opportunity to talk about those kind of things very often. So feel free to use this forum to do that. I think I'll probably hear more of that.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Do need to go back to Dergro. Let's just, on the record, let's get this, what fund this comes out of.
This is coming out of the road department's fund. This is a purchase of the right-of-way.
Is there a certain number?
So I have, I have Contract Services line item, which kind of, without having them in front of me, kind of pops out in my head is maybe where we should utilize this for an expenditure, unless Treasure's got a different idea.
Sound good.
I don't, I mean, we don't have a specific line item.
Yeah, we don't do this very often.
Acquisition right-of-way.
No, you're right.
And it wasn't something in the, at the budget time that I knew of or thought that that was gonna take place. So, but that's the line item that I have.
So we may have to do a resolution.
Historically, I have dollars in Contract Services for projects that may come up. But we can certainly look at, I'll look at all those line items and figure out what we wanna do, how we wanna do that.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
No, thank you.
Good work, Kevin.
All right. Next up is Jay Collins, Business Office Staffing. Jay, we see you online. We're gonna try and make sure you can talk here. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yep. There we go.
Can you see me?
Nope.
That's okay.
I guess you got the lights on. Yeah, it's all black, so maybe your camera is capped or closed off.
Oh, that's weird. Should be working, okay. Well, the reason I wanted to come to the meeting today is it was almost a year ago I left Lake County and moved to Idaho. I appreciate the flexibility you gave me to work remotely for this time, but we all knew that this would have to come to an end at some point. And we are there. So we need to move on, hire a new director, and my recommendation to the Board of Commissioners is that we hire Nikki Els, our Assistant Director. I don't think it makes sense to do, open up a recruitment when we have the perfect candidate in-house, and we'll end up hiring her anyway. What this will allow us to do is focus on hiring an accounting specialist and get this transition done as quickly as possible. I know I've talked with each of you, but I'm sure you have questions.
Well, first of all, Jay, you know, your contribution to the county is not being ignored here at all. Appreciate all you've done for the county and, you know, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That should be first and foremost, so. I accept your recommendation for Nikki, and I'm sure we'll have to vote on that. And I guess we'll discuss start dates and your last day and things like that.
Nikki and I met yesterday and just kinda penciled out a timeline. I think on October fifteenth, date for me to be gone. It's kinda what we're shooting for. It can happen sooner than that, but I don't think it would ever need to be later than that.
Okay, well, we can sort out those details. I know it's gonna take a little bit of time to advertise the accountant job. And it does take time because it has to be advertised for over three weeks. I think that will fall over Labor Day weekend, and it's just gonna take some time, so.
Yeah, so we're hoping to do interviews that week following Labor Day. I'll be there next week, so there are some details we need to hash or work through. Salary stipends, a few other things, but I think they're pretty simple. I'd like to do that in person with each of you before we come to a meeting to discuss it.
Okay.
Same as Barry, we appreciate the services that you've provided the county, Jay, for a very long time. In my short time here, I've appreciated working with you on a number of issues. Even when we've had disagreement, I've always known that I could sit down and we could work those things out. And just overall, appreciate your openness on all those matters. And it would have been great to have you here, you know, in person to just really talk more in-depth about some of these things. But maybe if, one last time before you take off, it'd be great to see you back here in Lake County and to try and work over some of this transition. I think.
Or two times.
Yeah. Barry wants two times.
Thank you. It's been a great run. Gosh, Nikki and I have been working together for fifteen, I think fifteen years, sixteen years, maybe.
Yeah.
And my friendships I've made with the county, and I mean, it's been great. I, anyway, I appreciate everything the county's done for me. I hope that I've been good for the county. I have given my best.
Certainly have. Thank you, Jenna.
And I just wanna say about Nikki, you know, she and I started this succession planning a few years ago, three years ago. And she has showed the initiative and desire and to improve herself and to learn, to grow and take on new responsibilities. At this point, she's pulling a lot of load, a heavy load. So I think she's gonna find the transition will be fairly easy, I think.
Okay. All right. So we don't really have, I guess we do have it on the agenda for action consideration. Nikki did share some of her application with us today and some of her information and just her qualifications for the job. So I guess, you know, is there a decision to be made on this right now? I personally feel like we have consensus to move forward with the transition.
Okay.
I haven't heard from Commissioner Albertson or anything, but I know you've spoken to him.
Yeah, I spoke with him again yesterday. He's fully on board with that at land.
Okay.
Let's just make a motion.
Make a motion on their table.
I'll make a motion to approve Nikki Els as the new Business Services Director for Lake County.
I'll second that motion. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Yeah, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We'll work on a start date and.
Yeah, work on that when Jay comes next week.
Yeah.
Sit down and talk about that.
Also work on advertising your vice job.
Yeah, that's, I know you and I spoke about that earlier. And I'd like to get that out as soon as possible.
I know it will be on the paper till next week, but I'm sure we can get it in the, on our website and out here before that, so.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations again. Thank you, Jay. Did you have anything else, Jay, at this point in time, or Nikki?
No, thank you.
I wanna say thank you, and I'm gonna work hard.
All right. Sounds good. All right, appreciate it. Next order of business, we have James Pereira, Veteran Service Office funding.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
So what do you have for any of us? Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs, ODVA's county application for ODVA funds, so.
With the direct numbers.
Yes, yes, sir, yes. Yeah, so the forty-seven thousand nine-six-three is the carryover from FY twenty-four. And then that total, combined with what ODVA will give us once we submit the application, that total amount is what it's what by. And that amount, looking at previous, is just pretty average for the county via sort of budget.
We normally receive odd funds. We normally do, don't we?
Yes.
Is this amount any different than past years? About the same?
It's pretty, yeah, it's pretty average.
All right.
Did a couple thousand or something.
Any questions?
Sounds good. Neither do I. This is a good deal. I guess I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to... We're submitting or are we accepting? Wouldn't we accept?
You accept.
Accept it when we get it?
Accepting that.
And then submitting, so. Once I submit it, then the funds from ODVA will be sent out.
It's not a competitive issue. It's an application for these funds that are available to us.
Yes.
So would that just be consensus to submit?
Yeah, yeah, or motion to submit and.
Submit and receive. Because they're going to give them to you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to submit to the, an application to the Oregon Department of Veteran Affairs for Lake County with fiscal revenue of one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-sixty. with fiscal revenue of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and total budgeted expenditures of a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, as well as receive these funds if, if accepted.
I'll second that motion.
Those, those numbers aren't quite right because sixteen thousand of that is actually coming from general fund.
General fund.
It's county fund. It is listed as county fund.
Yeah, but the total amount of dollars, that hundred and forty-eight thousand, isn't actually coming from ODVA. He has the sixteen thousand and then he has a carryover of forty-seven thousand. It's the bottom number that they're actually.
Seven, that's the eighty-four thousand.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll amend my motion to accept the odd funds for twenty-four, twenty-five in the amount of eighty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Yes.
Got it. All right, I'll second the amended motion. Although, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate your work on this. I know you love coming up and sitting at the mic.
Oh, absolutely. I'll take it.
All right, statewide fire emergency discussion. We have the Governor's Executive Order for this.
Does this mean?
Yeah. Yeah, well, I, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
The Governor of Oregon has declared a statewide emergency for all of Oregon due to wildfires in the twenty-twenty-four wildfire season. And Lake County is part of that. So far, we have been pretty lucky, although we have a fire on Park Mountain as of last evening that gained some steam. It's Executive Order number twenty-four dash thirteen, proclamation of state emergency due to imminent threat of wildfire. It states that I find the state of Oregon in a critical fire danger situation threatening life, safety and property due to extreme temperatures. We have experienced wildfires this season that resulted in two statewide conflagration declarations and federal fire management assistant grant declarations. Several community evacuations threatened and damaged structures and critical infrastructure. Our neighboring states of California, Idaho and Washington continue to experience similar fires and weather. The extended climate forecast in Oregon calls for continued warm and dry conditions resulting in imminent threat of fire over a broad area of the state. The Oregon State Fire Marshal, Oregon Department of Forestry and the Oregon Fire Mutual Aid System are heavily engaged in initial and extended wildfire attacks with multiple incident management teams currently deployed throughout Oregon. Projected weather and new and existing fire threats elevate the need for access to state resources including ground support and firefighting aircraft. This threat is not likely to recede in the near future. It is critically important that state's resources to include the Oregon National Guard be prepared to expedite requested resources and respond effectively to these dangerous and dynamic conditions if requested. Therefore, beginning July twelfth, twenty-twenty-four and continuing through October one of twenty-twenty-four, I hereby declare a statewide state of emergency due to imminent and ongoing threat of wildfire. It states therefore, it is directed and ordered that the Oregon Department of Emergency Management, or OEM, shall support access and use of personnel and equipment of all state agencies necessary to access, alleviate, respond to, mitigate or recover from conditions caused by this emergency and to meet requests by the Oregon Department of Forestry, Oregon Department of State Fire Marshal and/or the County of Tribal Emergency Management to support response needs to respond to or mitigate the effects of wildfire emergency as described in state's emergency operation plan. All Oregonians are to head the direction of emergency officials with regard to emergency in order to protect their safety. So Governors declared a state of emergency for wildfire and we're taking note of that as Lake County.
Up until October first of this year. Yeah, we didn't actually request anything. In the past, we have typically been at the front of the fire season and we have typically sent in a letter requesting a declaration of emergency. But this year, we've, the other counties got ahead of us, so. Yeah, was there anything else we wanted to discuss on that? It was good information for the public to be aware of.
We don't, I mean, we're gladly accept it if we need it.
Right.
We'll utilize those assets and uses if we, if necessary.
Yeah, and I believe we only have one person, one, well, the county has Daniel Tagg out and deployed it right now at the on fire address. But everyone else, all of our local teams are still here. We have deployed any task force from Lake County. So I guess with that, hopefully we just, our local folks just keep staying on top of these fires. Just keep praying for them. Hope things go well. Um, next up is drought declaration. I, I know, Mr. Schulberg, you've worked on this to prepare some language with Daniel Tagg. Do you mind going over that?
Yeah, so at our last commissioner meeting, we didn't quite have the language for the actual declaration. And we do today. We will get this into the state for a drought declaration ASAP so that it can make OWRD's next meeting, which I believe is on fourteenth. And we can hopefully be approved for drought declaration. We've heard from constituents for this request because we're already hauling water for cattle and other livestock. And it also makes various state funds available to help, help out. So we have Resolution twenty-two four dash zero four. Want me to read it?
Yeah, I can too. I know you read the last one, so. Sure. Right. In the matter of declaring a local disaster, request to declare a state drought emergency for Lake County, Resolution twenty-two dash oh four. Whereas on the seventh day of August, two thousand twenty-four, the Lake County Board of Commissioners finds that the Lake County agriculture and livestock industry as a related and related economy are suffering widespread and severe economic damage, potential injuries and loss of property resulting from extreme weather conditions within the county. Whereas the U.S. Drought Monitor has identified all of the Lake County as moderate drought as of July sixteenth of twenty-twenty-four, C attached A, here to and herein incorporate by these reference, by this reference. Whereas steam flow in Lake County over the water year thus far is ninety-three percent of average as of seven fourteen. More recent steam flows are well below, excuse me. More recent stream flows, am I saying steam flow?
Yeah.
More recent stream flows are well below average. According to the U.S. Drought Monitor, over sixty-eight percent of Lake County is experiencing moderate drought, D-one conditions. One of the key indicators used in determining drought coverage in the standardized precipitation evapotranspiration index, which is an indicator of weather conditions are wa, are wetter or drier than normal. The SPEI for Lake County for March and June is showing drier than normal conditions, especially when compared to the same months for twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-three. Furthermore, evaporative demand over the past forty-five days has been significant enough to contribute to decrease, to a decrease in soil moisture throughout the county. Whereas unless weather conditions improve substantially to above normal conditions, water users who rely solely on stored water will have a shortened water use season and depend, depending upon the priority date of their water right, water users who rely on stream flows will have substantially less water available and shorten water use season. Whereas the above conditions result in a loss of economic stability, pasture shortages, decrease in feed production, shortened growing season and decreased water supplies for Lake County agricultural livestock producers. In addition, this multi-year cumulative drought has resulted in decreased fuel moisture and prolonged fire danger. Whereas the Lake County Board of Commissioners determines the extraordinary measures must be taken to alleviate suffering of people and livestock to protect or mitigate economic loss and to present, and to be responsive to the threat of wildfire. Page two, if I can get to it. Now therefore, being proclaimed by the Lake County Board of Commissioners that a local disaster is declared within Lake County, the Lake County Drought Emergency Management Plan has been implemented. Due to the state of emergency, the Lake County Board of Commissioners do hereby request and entreat the Honorable Tina Kotek, Governor of Oregon, to A, declare a drought of emergency for all of Lake County under the provision of ORS five-three-six due to the severe and continuing drought conditions beginning July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four and continuing for an unknown period of time and direct the Oregon Department of Water Resource to make available in Lake County temporary transfers of water rights and emergency water use permits and use of existing right options, agreement and other federal and state drought assistance and programs as needed. B, direct the Oregon Department of Emergency Management to coordinate and assist as needed to address current and projected conditions in Lake County. C, direct all other state agencies to coordinate with the above agencies and to provide appropriate state resources as determined necessary to assist those affected in Lake County. This proclamation shall take effect immediately from, from and after its issuance and will expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Just a comment on the.
Steam flows?
Actually, it's the same where I was. Steam flow is below. But on seven fourteen, it was showing sixty-eight percent of Lake County in moderate drought. Well, they updated it again here at the end of July and it's a hundred percent is in moderate drought, so. It is really ramped up, so anyway.
I actually was going to ask you that question when kind of looking at this document this morning, whether or not there have been any changes on some of that since then, because I know this data is constantly changing and. And with the.
You can see the balance, but seven hundred percent now. That's what we'll submit.
Okay, sounds good. So you'll make those amendments before we submit them or?
I think it's good. It's good. Seven fourteen, sixty-eight percent.
Right.
They know it's a hundred percent.
Sounds good. All right, I'll entertain a motion on this resolution then.
I'll make a motion to request for declare drought declaration for Lake County and submit to OWRD and to the Governor for recognition from the state likewise.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now down to several requests. Humane Society of North Lake County requests for funding. We had an email from Karen Morgan, an email from the North Lake Humane Society, which I know they've been working on getting going for some time now. They've requested a monetary sum of money and are asking us to consider one thousand five hundred dollars to contribute to the Humane Society for North Lake County. I personally, I, I really appreciate this request and, and to quote you, Commissioner Schulberg at a previous meeting, it's, it's great when people actually follow through with an actual request. If they intend to get any kind of a a sum of money from the County General Fund for whatever project it might be, it's, we need to have those requests submitted to us in writing. And it's appreciated of those who follow through with it. But and the, the issue that I'm having here is the same issue that we've been dealing with for the last years. We have very limited resources and limited funds and a lot of uncertainty in the days ahead. Happy to consider your thoughts on this. I'm, I've been wrestling with this for some time because I think that they're doing some great work up there. I'm just not sure that we have the ability to, to get them any resources this year and to help at this point in time.
I concur. Yeah, I appreciate also the application. I just, the county is not the go-to at this time to help out with this. And it's unfortunate that we can't help out. I think that, I hope that they consider us in the future if we ever get into a better financial scenario, but this would be going in an opposite direction of where we need to be with everybody, so to be physically responsible. I just, I can't support it at this time.
Okay.
Doesn't mean I don't recognize the need.
Right.
Just have to find some funding from somewhere else.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I think, I think the key point is at this point in time, that's, I, I think if things were to change, and they could, we might reconsider this, but for now. Okay, I, I don't know, we, I don't think we need a motion on it. I think there's just consensus that at this point in time, we will be unable to facilitate this request. But we appreciate it nonetheless. Eastern Oregon Counties Association membership dues. So E O C A, we've been a member for some years now. In the past, Lake County has not always been a member. This is, we are a member of AOC and have been for many, many years. I think since the inception of the Association of Oregon Counties. E O C A was a separate association that really honked in on Eastern Oregon issues because ours were many times different. Our forestry issues were different. The management of the forest and our lands were different. That's how it kind of started was from a natural resource management lens and then, you know, water issues and so forth, which are just very different on the eastern side of the state. I know we've both had, all three commissioners have had different views at different points in time, or at least have gotten different things out of E O C A. I personally think it's a great bunch of commissioners that are working very hard for their county. And I, I haven't attended the last few meetings. Commissioner Schulberg, if you want to share a little bit of some of what you've gotten out of them and that association membership. If you want to.
Yeah, I mean, they just handle issues that affect Eastern Oregon. Take initiative and work hard. An example would be the site screens that the Forest Service was looking to amend. But lost in court, E S C A supported the Forest Service in making those changes. Unfortunately, it didn't work out, but that's just one example. They're already, E O C A is already looking at priorities for the long session for twenty-five and had have had that meeting and kind of set those, those goals out there.
So in keeping with some of that natural resource lens for E O C A, they have a tiered approach to their dues. For tier one, it's for counties. For tier one, it's for counties that receive a payment in lieu of tax in excess of $2 million. And then it goes down from there between 1 and 2 million, which we fall in the category of, because we did not exceed the $2 million mark in PILT funding this last cycle. And then it goes all the way down to counties that receive under $500,000, and they pay like a $2,500 membership. We would be looking at a $10,000 membership fee this year, based upon this calculation. And that, again, is because of the dollars that we receive in PILT funding each allocation. So, again, I'm similar to last discussion, but taking into account that we are paying this out of those PILT numbers. Is that correct? Or is this a general fund allegation, allocation, based upon receipt of PILT funding?
That's how, that's how EOC is justifying it.
That's how they justify it, but it's not where the dollars are coming from.
We can, we can have it come from, you know, 215, or, you know, we could have it come from whatever. But, again, I think that in good times, it's good to be a member of EOC and AOC, but in lean times, I think we need to, in this case, tell EOC that we just need to take a pass and that we're trying to hold tight here, and if we get back into better financial times in the future, that we can move forward with being a member again, in my opinion.
I actually concur with that.
So, it's not an easy thing. We've got good relationships with them, and I think they're looking out for, for Eastern Oregon, but we can't, you know, have cake and ice cream. So, especially in the lean years, so, we probably just need to stick with AOC.
And this doesn't mean that we don't support them.
Yeah, doesn't mean we can't still be involved.
Right. We just won't have a vote on any of their meetings, but we can still support them in other ways and support their efforts. I haven't, I'm not stepping down this treasure on the executive committee at AOC, so having that at AOC as well, some Eastern Oregon folks, we can continue to elevate the issues from Eastern Oregon there as well. All right. Consensus or motion, or you go first?
Yeah, dies to lack of motion.
Yeah, yeah, no motion for acceptance, so we're just consensus that we're not going to be able to pay EOC dues this year. Next up, we have the meeting minutes for June 4th, work session. June 5th, regular session, and June 18th, combined work and regular session minutes. Actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that last. Jake Greer, you're sitting here. I know you've been patiently waiting.
You can finish up. I was a late to the game thing, so I can appreciate just being on there, and so you guys go ahead and finish up.
Okay, we'll just take a quick motion then on the minutes.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve work session for June 4th, 2024 minutes, the minutes for June 5th, 2024 regular session, and the minutes for the June 18th, 2024 combined session, as presented.
Second that motion. Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, so Jake, thank you again for waiting, but this is the Lake County, Clamath County Juvenile Department. And if you feel awkward about us making you wait till last, really, in reality, we're just making Clamath County wait till last, so you can just take it that way.
I do appreciate that. So, before you, based on our fiscal year 24, 25 budget reduction, we took a hard look at our detention usage over the last three years. We have a great working relationship with Clamath County and their juvenile department, specifically their detention center. We've never been told no as long as we meet the criteria for lodging somebody, which we do. Nevertheless, historically, we've budgeted about just under $25,000 for 220 bed days a year, which equates to 55 bed days a quarter. Taking a look at our retention usage historically, over the last three years, excuse me, last three fiscal years, and our current budget, state of the budget, we reduced that to $1,000, or excuse me, $15,840, which equates to 144 bed days a year. So, there's about an 80, 80 bed reduction, which is a huge cost savings to us. I know historically, we always budgeted about the $28,000 mark to give us a little flexibility should we overuse our detention, not by choice, just by the acts that are We're sticking to our guns with $15,840. So, and speaking of climate, that's, they'll be able to absorb about $10,000 reduction to use our monies for the materials and services for detention purposes, so they'll be able to absorb that, and our hope is we slowly get back there. I would like to get back to where we were, but if we can't justify by use, and the county has always been fluid with us on, should we need more, because we have kids over there that need to be there, we make that happen. So, I'm comfortable moving forward with this, and speaking with Dan Gold in the Juvenile Department Director for Clamath County, who oversees the detention and juvenile department, he's good with those contracts. So, we'll roll with that.
Yeah, like you say, for some reason, if we need to add more bed days, we have the ability to do so.
There may be a little more cost than the one, $15,840, because when I worked that budget, I was looking at the four quarters for '24, '25. This quarter, this month, we paid for the last three quarters of '23, '24. So, that said, that number was higher than what I've been allocated for this year. Next year, we should be right, right back on track. So, there might be a little bit there. I'll work with Malin on that, and if we can come back to a resolution to make up that, make up those dollars, we'll be right that time.
Okay. So, it doesn't say in here exactly how many beds there are, though?
It's 144 beds a year. It's in there.
Yeah, well, it says, it says 144 bed days.
36 bed days per quarter.
Yeah.
Which is nine days a month.
So technically speaking, I mean, we could have three or even four kids at a time. It's just, you know, I mean, I like the way that it's written, is what I'm saying, because based upon the capacity of the actual issues that we may be facing, there's flexibility within this to accommodate additional cases, per se. But it's-
And if by chance we go over our bed day rate, it is $110 a day.
Yeah, or charged extra, should it be?
Yeah, or if we go over our usage.
If we go over.
Unfortunately, a few years ago, pre-COVID, we had three kids over there for at least 50 days apiece because of measure 11 crimes committed. I, and-
You got no control over that?
-home, so unfortunately, I was able to return them home. So, it sat there until the cases were adjudicated, and we did come up with Plan B. So, we went over substantially that quarter, and the county was gracious enough, with their understanding of juvenile detention is fluid. Very hope, we shoot, shoot for the bullseye, and sometimes we miss that.
Yeah. That sounds good. I'm gonna lean on the motion maker today. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation between Lake County, Clamath County for juvenile department bed days at their Clamath County quarters, fiscal impact of $5,000, or $15,840.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Right.
Aye, motion carries. All right. That concludes our business for the day. Appreciate your work on that, Jake. Thank you. We didn't end up having as much discussion on some of the matters as I was anticipating, so it's good. We actually finished up right at 10 o'clock.
Good, thank you, guys.
Oh, is there, is there any public comment? Would you like to share anything? I had to check with online first.
It's like, I don't really have a lot. It's the Junior Rodeo this weekend at the Fairgrounds.
Yes.
And then on the 13th, there is a wildfire movie at the Alger at 6:00 PM on Tuesday. Fill out a survey on wildfire and wildfire preparedness in return for a free ticket. You can get the surveys at my office. And then Daily Days the week after that, and if we survive that, we're headed right into rodeo.
Sounds good. Where is Daily Days being held this year?
I have not gotten confirmation, confirmation. I believe it's gonna be at the hospital.
Okay, right, that makes sense.
Yeah, the flyer slash questionnaire for the free movie has to do with community welfare protection plans.
Oh, really?
And it's an effort that, you know, Lake County is going through revamping our CWPP. It'll be good for about 10 years, and this is part of those efforts of outreach into the public and getting input, you know, on what we can do to improve our community welfare
Else?
So, August 13th at 6:00 PM, fill out the questionnaire, get a free movie, Disney's, planes, fire and rescue.
Sounds good. All right. Appreciate you being here, Shelley. Just as the chamber director and being and attending these commissioner meetings, it is appreciated. Thank you.
The goal of my job is to be a good advocate for the community and for the economic development and the economic health of the community. That means I need to know what's going on.
Sure, absolutely.
I will be sitting there.
Sounds good. All right, with that, it is 10:05, and we will adjourn the meeting.